Okay, it is 6:30. We will call the meeting to order. Mr. President, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael Murray.
Here.
Travis Schulze. Richard Yerington.
Present.
Sean Zabinski.
Here.
John Glenn.
Here.
Nicole Hart.
Here.
Lamont Kiefer.
Here.
Nellie Peter.
Here.
Dean Peterson.
Here.
Okay, we will move on. I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are opening the public meeting at 6:31. Molly?
So I can just give a little bit of background. City of Toma started the shared ride program in 2010. We have a third party that operates that on our behalf. We pay them an hourly rate. So as far back as I could find, our rates have more than doubled for what we must pay to operate the service. It's funded in three ways. One is through a grant that is paid half through the state of Wisconsin and half through the federal Transportation Administration. The percentages that they will cover have also decreased from a high of around 65% to this year down to 54%?
54.7.
Thank you. It's in my report. I should reference that. Thanks. Okay. And then the other portion is our levy funding. We have capped that at $45,000. As you all know, we don't have a lot of levy dollars to go around, so we would prefer not to have to increase our portion or the levied portion that the citizens pay for the service. That's where number three comes in. It's supplemented by the fare revenue that we receive on the rides given to our citizens. These fare revenues or these fare rates have not been increased since we started the service in 2010. So what we're asking tonight is to raise each fare rate by $1, taking the adult fare to $4.25 and then the special fare to $3.75 and the out-of-town miles fee to $3 per mile up to 10 miles.
Because 10 miles is the limit that that service--
10 miles is the limit that we will transport individuals. Correct.
Is there any reason why we haven't taken it incrementally over the years? You know, I realize that you weren't here when this program originated.
Yep.
You're kind of digging around. I don't, but in your opinion, or--
I think it's twofold. One is, I think, turnover within the city's administration of the service. Also, the big increases in our hourly rate have come with them the last four to five years. It's also a good time to look at it because we have changed providers and with that provider, we took on a fairly large hourly rate increase.
By increasing them, that means that we're looking to get better service on the cab--
That's our hope. That was our hope with--
Because, I mean, we've had a lot of unhappy people.
Correct. And when we went through the RFP process, it was surprising to me to find that cost of the service was actually not taken into consideration as much as our anticipation of how they could meet our needs. And so that really is what weighed into our change of provider and we're hopeful that the community will see.
So what would be the improvement or--
Well, we have a new provider. So they have committed to running 24/7 service, which we had contracted our last provider for and they weren't actually providing that to our citizens. There are also, there's much more monitoring on staffing appropriately for call volumes. We're getting a lot more data than I had ever seen before. And where we're going through some growing pains right away is they're very strict on the rules. Our shared ride service is a grant-funded program and so with that comes a lot of regulation and they're very in tune with what those regulations are and they're enforcing those rules. So again--
I think that's, I'm sorry Molly, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I think that's important for us to keep in mind. We can demand all of the customer service that we want to demand. Again, this is not, I mean, while it is an independent business, it's not necessarily an independent business. You know, if we haven't had an increase in 2012, tell me what bill in your house hasn't gone up since 2012. A rate increase should be a natural expectation throughout this. You know, I look at any places we've gone, you know, I'll use Las Vegas as an example. If we go to Las Vegas and we get an Uber, it's a lot more than $4, you know. It is, the rates around here for what's being provided are really, really reasonable.
I agree with that, but just asking, you know, what is the new contract going to do?
Sure. Well, and I think that's, I think that's, you know, the important part is that, you know, we can, we can ask and we can hope, but, you know, it still comes down to people performing the services and the city has relative amount of control over that.
How long is the contract, by the way?
Well, like that's a three-year contract and then there's exercise of three years of options, five years.
But I think it's also-- But I think it's also important to note too, as Molly said, that, you know, you've got an organization now that while you're expanding in certain capacities, they know their policies. And some people may not like the fact that certain things can't be done, whereas others may have done it. Well, you know, you're going to follow these guidelines and again, that's what's going to make, you know, and again, I'm being presumptuous with this. I don't know if it ever happened, but if you talk a 10-mile parameter, you know, some people said, "Ah, forget it. You know, we'll go 15 or whatever." Well, now that affects your service in town. Now that, you know, they go 15 and go beyond where the parameters are allowing, now that changes all your times in town for people to--
I just want to have a transparency on what we're doing to make sure that we're giving this increase, but we're also improving to the customers that use this service.
Yeah, understandable. I mean, again, it's a subjective topic as to--
Because those are the ones that come to us and say, "Hey, this is not happening. What are we doing about it? What's the city doing about it?" That's the conversation I get when I get a phone call. So that is the question. That's why I'm asking.
I believe the new contract has more hours per week that they're going to do as well. So is it like 50 or something?
Yeah, we increased it by 50 hours per week.
So that should be, that should help.
Okay.
And this is with Abbey Vans, right?
Correct.
And so they are a pretty reputable company. We've heard good things. We're hopeful.
I have several questions. Do we have a record of the ridership for the past several years?
We do not. We have, well, we have those numbers in bulk for, you know, levels of ridership and breakdown of fares that we've received by fare category. But now I'm actually getting data on, I mean, if I want it, I get a daily report of everyone they picked up and dropped off and what their fare category was and--
The second question I have, and this relates back to a complaint I got last week from one of my residents in my district. They called for cab service and never told they had to book it a day in advance. And I don't know if that's true or not.
I wouldn't think that would be, so the Mass Transit Service has always stressed booking in advance when you know. You know, if you're, if you're having transportation to an appointment, you usually know plenty of time in advance. That's not always the case. We have people who also take it to the grocery store or whatever that may be. So I don't think that's required. They may have encouraged it if they were booking for an appointment, but otherwise I can't see a circumstance where that would be required.
I would think that would be counterintuitive if you're doing a cab service or transportation service. I don't know what percentage would be planning a day ahead of time to exactly what hour they're going to want to ride. Versus, most of them, I would think, would be on a spur-of-the-moment type of a request.
Well, and we have to remember this isn't a cab service. This is our mass transit program.
Right. And again, this is, what you've got to keep in mind is that that comment may have been the fact that they only have so many operable vehicles. And if they're booked, they're booked. The comment may be, you know, maybe try next time booking a day in advance. Again, you know, I think where people lose sight of this is that this is a transit program, exactly as Molly said. Anybody in the community of Toma is welcome to open a cab service. They are more than welcome to open their own independent business and run a cab service. What's being done by the city here is being funded by the state in that, you know, they have their regulations, they have their stipulations and so while it does have the City of Toma name on it, you know, again, there's parameters and there's guidelines. But I, you know, I've heard it, you know, the same capacity of the things you hear, I see it on social media. Oh, well, Toma won't allow a cab service to come into town. Of course we will. It's, I mean, it is a free enterprise. Anybody that wants to be an Uber driver, be an Uber driver. Nobody's preventing any of this.
We had a good cab service and we drove out of town.
Well, I would, I would, I'm not going to get into that argument, but I think that's a subjective topic and I think it's, I disagree wholeheartedly with it.
Again, we're open for business.
We're open for business. Anybody that wants to open a cab service, open a cab service.
And please do.
And please do. We could use it. The city could use it.
Because it was just, it was never meant to be the cab service. Never.
I do have one last question for you. This increase, would it cover the one year and the two option years?
It should cover the life of this contract.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we're going to see, right? I mean, everything's going forward.
Well--
Costs accelerate.
Exactly.
Well, if--
Five, six-- But it'll be incrementally, hopefully from now. That's the only issue I really have. I like increments. I don't like that dollar is a very high percentage of this fare.
Right. And now that we're under contract with Abbey, we shouldn't be seeing a large jump from them either. The reason we had such a large jump from last year to this year is because it went out for RFP and there was a considerable cost increase with that.
So hopefully we're going to get improvements across the board, better customer service, and we're going to start making it a viable, more viable business because we shouldn't be subsidizing it at all in reality. That $45,000, we should be trying to diminish over time. With incremental increases to get this thing to be sustainable.
Mayor, are you looking for a motion for, we have to close the public hearing?
No, we invite public comment on this. Hearing done. We would look for the motion.
I make a motion to approve--
Oh, I'm sorry. We've got to close first.
Motion to close the public hearing then. If there's no public comment.
Second.
So we have a motion by Kiefer, a second by Zabinski. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'd entertain a motion to approve the rate increase.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. Decrease it that $1. The dollar as described in our--
Sorry, can I make a request?
Sure.
This was also brought to my attention just today, but we've had some questions for the special rates. In the past, that has included veteran status. We would like to include that. My report only says senior disabled children, but we would like to add veteran if you guys are okay with that. And then the other thing that we'd just like to clarify so we have it in meeting minutes is that we set the senior age at 55. That's historically where it's been.
Okay. So the veterans would be 375?
The veterans would be under that special rate of 375.
And the age for seniors--
And the age for seniors would be set at 55.
I have a question for part of discussion. When you have multiple passengers from the same location going to the same location--
Yep.
Is there a discount rate on the second, third, and fourth passenger?
No. It's a shared ride service. That's how it's intended to work.
I have no--
Nellie, did you amend?
Yeah, I make a motion to amend that for seniors to have 375 and age for seniors at 55.
Yes. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There.
Motion carries. Anyone desiring to appear before the council? If not, we'll move on to the mayor's report. This will be quick. It's going to be a lot of people here. So I just want to say a big shout out to the Public Works Department, all the guys plowing snow. The long hours, the snow to deal with, did an amazing job. And so just be patient. They're still clearing a lot of piles. Oh, to be a kid again and climbing on some of those piles of snow. But a big shout out to the, to all the guys and gals that have been out working day and night. So thank you for that. With that, we'll move on to the senior executive team.
Evening. I have the report in front of you. Still meeting with developers and TID ten on ongoing infrastructure reviewing, whatever we can do to help facilitate some development on that end of town. Also, we met and talked with Vanderwall. We are asking or trying to develop their role and what their services will be in TID reporting and JRV. From Shane's end from the comprehensive plan, I believe the survey is out or will be out very soon for that update. You know, it'll be on the website and I anticipate it'll be on Facebook as well. Meetings attended, CBB, Chamber, and we also did, not myself, but met with the Toma Public Housing Authority trying to solidify the lease with the property on Milwaukee Street. That should be hopefully ready soon for approval. And then we met with Monroe County Highway Department. If you remember quite a while back, we went, entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Monroe County for the ET project and our next, or our first leg of that will start next year. And just finalizing those plans and the bid will be on the 31st of January. And that will be bid through the county. They're the lead on this. Since they were the ones that applied for the grant money, they take the lead and we will see how those come out. Hopefully we get good pricing on that.
Kirk, I do have a question on that ET project. The bids on the 31st, that's when they go out or that's when they quote?
We'll receive bids on the 31st.
Okay. So how much input does the city have on their part of that project?
100%. So the county really, even though I would say that they're driving the bus for the project, their portion is less than ours in terms of they're responsible for the two driving lanes. Really, the rest of it is our portion to take care of utilities, curb and gutter, sidewalks, all those things. It's really loaded towards us. We obviously work and partner with them on any of the infrastructure going in, but--
How much, how much is our portion of that project? Does that project definitely have to? Or does it depend on when the bids come back?
We have estimates. I just don't have those on the top of my head. They've really changed over the last year or two just for the pricing and that, so--
Is it 3 million?
I would say that'd be a pretty close estimate. We are getting $1 million in grant money. So that will be split proportionately between us and the county. Really, that probably covered the increases with either inflation, COVID pricing, those types of things.
The project starts on Veterans Go all the way to where?
Just past the food pantry in the first sharp corner is, there's really no--
And that's going to have sewer, gutter, sidewalks, no?
Yes.
Yep.
The sewer and water will be redone. Curb and gutter will be in. There is a portion on the south side where sidewalks will not go in from the range down to the far corner, but the rest of it will be sidewalk, curb and gutter, bike lanes, sewer and water.
Do you know when you're going to notify those residents?
We have, we're planning for assessments here in February. Our project got a little bit delayed for going out for bid, so we'll have assessments on in February. They'll get a plan view of what's going on. We have had input meetings along the way, but that will also be another one that--
Thank you.
Doesn't that project go all the way to Nicholas?
Nicholas. I think what you're referring to is we had initially started and looked at as a whole entire project and we started to break it apart because it just got too expensive. The plan is to go to Nicholas, but this first phase that we have grant money for will be down just past the food pantry.
Okay. It's a corner by Bull and Sun?
Correct.
And again, the county's driving the bus right there. They don't have money for the two lanes to do all the rest.
Yeah, it was, it was a grandiose plan to do the whole thing, but back pre-COVID, the pricing was favorable and it just didn't turn out that way. So-- And delaying it, we got some grant money, so, you know, that kind of offset what issues funding-wise that we had.
And we're looking for more. The county--
The county does a very good job and looking for that, they're just more in tune to those funding mechanisms and they've been successful. So we definitely like that partnership.
Okay, I have a question going back up to our comprehensive plan. It says something about a survey. Who's doing that? Who's supposed to take it? Is it for the citizens? Is it for--
I'm going to refer that to Shane. I think he's online.
Employees of the city? I mean, it seems kind of vague and people won't be looking for it. And also, how are we going to get out there that it's there to be--
For the city benefit from all the--
We're going to recognize--
This is-- Remove all from that project.
Mayor, could you recognize someone that's trying to speak here? I had asked Shane to comment on this and I think Mr. Thorson is trying to.
Mr. Thorson, are you commenting on this?
Sorry, I'll move. I thought I was--
Okay. Public comment was earlier in this unless, are you requesting that Mr. Thorson be allowed to speak?
No.
Okay. Public comment was available earlier in the meeting, so at this point in time, public comment less recognized by a council member is not allowed. So Shane, will you please address this?
Sure. The survey that Lamont mentions is part of our company has a plan update, part of the public participation plan. It's similar to a survey we would have done in 2013, tweaked a little bit just because some of the questions are no longer pertinent. So Vanderwall is housing that on their website, but we have links currently up on the city website and the Toma Chamber website.
So how are we going to get people to participate? They're not out there looking for that. So how does anyone know to participate?
It's on Facebook. I think Becky can probably speak to that.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So today I posted on our website, there's a big orange bar when you first log into our website in the mobile or on the desktop edition. It will be posted to Facebook tomorrow if it hasn't already been, so social media will have it. I sent a press release to the media, so they have it. And then, you know, we'll also have it, of course, the council meeting being televised by the Eagles Sports Network. And then we'll also have manual ways to take the survey here at City Hall if someone is unable to do it digitally.
So that'd be in the paper?
That would be up to the media who's covering, you know, if they, with the press release, if they choose to do that.
All right. Thank you very much because it just seems vague and, you know, I wouldn't be looking for it. So just kind of wondering how we get the public to even look for it to participate because I'm sure we want some participation. That's what it's for. We want to see what kind of input we're going to get from these questions to help update that comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. In the interest of some visitors that we have, I'm going to move ahead to committee of the hall. Item number 10. We'd like to recognize the donation from the Toma Youth Hockey Association and add alternate one bid to the Toma ICE Center Edition project. Joe?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Kelly Clapton's here for Keller. Just briefly, we had that, I believe, the last meeting or prior council meetings in the committee of the hall, we had approved the original bid. We went back and got rebids for the fire sprinkler systems and that came in favorably. So we were close to reaching our budget with alternate one. Toma Youth Hockey Association come forward and would like to donate the rest so we can add alternate one to the project to square the building up like Mr. Yerington commented on to make it nice and clean on that side of the ICE Center and add more storage room or whatever deemed necessary to put in that extra space there, which is much needed at the ICE Center. If you've been there not only for hockey events, but also tractor pull, fair, we store a lot of our other activities, gymnastics, park and rec programs, community events in the ICE Center in the summer and this will hopefully allow us to have the Zambonians, their stuff in this area and we can utilize other areas of ICE Center. So it's not only for hockey, it's for other community users at recreation parks. So just looking for the council to recognize their donation and to accept alternate one with the project at the ICE Center.
I have a question.
Sure.
We're running with their donation. We're running real close to the bid cost, right?
Correct.
Is there any, how much contingency money is in, in the bid part of it? Is there much contingency in there?
Not a contingency at this time, no.
Because I'm wondering who's going to, can we, who's going to pick that up if it happens to run overrun?
Well, it'd be a question that'd come from the Parks and Rec Commission to see what type of funding we'd have or something we, or we'd work with, once again, Toma Youth Hockey Association to see if they, and I've mentioned that with their board that, you know, we're right close to it. They're puts us right at that mark and if we run into something, but they, you know, good faith they commented if it's within reason, they continue to help us with that project. So good faith they--
Because I kind of like that--
Correct.
That the city isn't going to be borrowing more money.
Well, this is what we have for that project and, you know--
That's got to be somewhere besides borrowing money.
In good faith, they just want to come forward. They want to cover what it is, but they just want to throw X amount. You know, we don't know that until we start digging and putting the structure up, so.
Well, with Keller being their construction manager, it's very unlikely that you'd have any major overrun. They pretty much hold the contractors to the line as they did in the fire station.
Hopefully.
If I could add to that, this is Kelly here. Thank you for that comment. But yes, I feel very confident that there's not going to be any cost overruns on this. I did a thorough bid review with all the contractors. We got good contractors on board. I'm very confident in telling you that the only way that that project would go up is if the hockey group or the city would want to make changes.
So what you're saying is no change orders, right?
No change orders, just like the fire station.
Okay.
And we have Keller to pick up any overruns if we have no change orders.
Okay. You guys need a motion?
Yes. I will, I will say that, I will say that I'm very confident that there will not be any change orders or any cost overruns. If there are, we will, we will take, we'll take it up. You guys have been good to us and we're going to be good to you.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to accept the alternate one bid and also the, thank you to the-- For the--
All right. So we have a motion by Glenn and a second by Yerington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you everyone.
We will go to public safety. We will go to public safety.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
I, uh, do not have much. Our new officer, Brandon Belacero, has started with us January 2nd. He's going through, uh, acclimation process, getting inundated with our culture, and he starts his training here, uh, first week of February. K-9 Raiden, who's got the injured paw, his cast is now off, and, uh, he's starting to go on short walks, so this is all for the surgeon and whatnot, so, so far the prognosis looks good on him. Uh, sorting through some applications right now for, uh...
Who shut that?
Wow, okay. Um, going through applications right now for, uh, part-time custodian position, uh, supposed to have some interviews soon. Uh, June 7th is our K-9 golf tournament, June 7th. So I got some people up here that, that partake in that, much appreciated, June 7th it is. Uh, lastly, um, we have, or will be having, a, he's a sex offender that's gonna be moved into the city of Toma. Now, we have an ordinance that prohibits this, okay? However, um, there are some exemptions in our ordinance. This person is coming out of Mendota, uh, health facility in Madison, and he's gonna be on supervised release, and there is a circuit court judge in Polk County, Wisconsin, that has court ordered him to reside at a group home that we have in Toma. And because of that, um, that supersedes our ordinance. So I have a meeting, um, Friday regarding this gentleman, and, um, I will be putting out, I'm sure, a release, um, to the community on who this person is, where they'll be staying, what their history is, things like that, so that's gonna be coming, so don't be surprised when you hear that. Any questions at all on that or anything else?
So it's all under control, to the best of our ability?
Um, we can't prohibit it, you know? I'm not happy about it, um, I'm, you know, but that's what it is.
We can't, we can't deny it.
No. So we'll put out as much information that we can.
How long's he gonna be in that group home?
Until, uh, he's being released, he's not through Department of Corrections, so he was found NGI in court. He's got several offenses. NGI is not a reason, or not guilty by reason of, is it, is it?
Insanity.
Insanity, is that what, okay. Um, so he, he wasn't competent, stand trial, so they put him in a, uh, mental health facility, and he's been there for a while, so. They've deemed, uh, the powers that be deemed him, uh, okay to be released, um, so, he will be released. And then a circuit court judge, this gentleman has absolutely nothing to do with the city of Toma, uh, as far as I know, never lived here, uh, but, uh, the, if the judge in Polk County can order him to stay wherever in Wisconsin, as long as the group home is willing to accept that person.
So, and I may be out of line by asking this, but I'm gonna ask it and you can not answer.
Okay.
But what of the peo- what about the people in the group home?
I agree. What about...
I think, I think that would fall, um, to the group home.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other residents?
It becomes their liability.
Staff? Sure.
I just had it now.
No, I, I, I get it, I understand.
It is a, uh, to my knowledge, it is a, um, as the chief said, while this person is assigned, you also have to have the facility willing to take. So it's a, it's a two-way street.
Yeah, and, um, I know that there's a lot of group homes that don't accept these people, but it's just so everyone is clear, um, the state of Wisconsin pays group homes to house these people, and they get, they have full knowledge of who they're getting, it's not like random. They get the case file, they know everything, everything they're taking off, so they're, they're making a conscious decision.
So that group home is gonna have some kind of, um, conversation with the police department or...
Um, they're not required to.
Yeah, they're, they're not required to. Do you remember the, the Shane Helm, correct, Helm Kent from, uh, Eau Claire? They had committed homicide, whatever, we were never notified of that, uh, at all. We found out, um, secondhand that this gentleman's even in the community, whatever, for whatever reason. Now, I did receive a document today, uh, reference this sex offender that's coming to our community, and it's just the, uh, the order from the, uh, circuit court judge, and it's, it's kind of brief, so I don't have, they don't come to us with the, the case file, or they don't do any of that. We, we're not even part of the, uh, conversation. And it's not just because it's us, I mean, we're just, they don't involve us.
Does the, does the group home, um, does the judge's order to be in the group home supersede the location of where we would allow?
Yes.
People like that?
Yep.
So it could be across the street from the group or whatever?
Yeah.
On a lighter note, with the K-9 golf outing?
Yeah.
Penny has agreed to play the entire K-9 outing from the rough.
Oh, wonderful. The rough, I got it, I got it. That's good. Well, she's playing with me, that's where we'll be...
That's where we'll be playing. Anything else?
Um, regards to this last snowstorm, did you have much, uh, problem with parked vehicles that had to be sighted?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, for sure. So we've taken, and I've told you guys this last year, we've taken kind of a little bit more of a common sense approach with this. If it's gonna snow, we notify the public, uh, but we're not out there every night doing parking. There was a time when we did, but we're like, well, what really is the point? The point of it is for snow removal, so, uh, but yes, past week, there's been a few.
Is more than you expected or less?
Um, I mean, I didn't really have an expectation, to be quite honest with you, but I mean, there's plenty, there's no doubt. Um, it's not pleasant, you know, who wants to get up in the, in the morning and take care of the vehicle, but, you know, there's purpose for it. Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right, move on to the...
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Jim.
You have my written report, I'll also be brief here. Uh, firewise, we, uh, advertise for volunteer paid on-call firefighters. Uh, going to be having, uh, interviews with the PFC hopefully at the end of January and maybe by this time next month, I'll give you some good news, and we got some new guys hired, so, um, so we're working on that. Something under my general category, I just wanted to be as transparent as I can, because that's my job, um, not technically in the market right now for looking for a fire truck, but, um, things have changed over the past, uh, since we bought our last one, our last truck was bought in 2018, and it used to take us, uh, 12 to 13 months to, from ordering a truck, designing a truck, and, and getting it delivered. And today, if I ordered a truck tomorrow, it would be, uh, about two months shy of five years, so that's where the market's at. So I've made Molly aware of this, the treasurer, so we have to like, can you keep this on our radar, and every year it's been getting worse and worse and worse, so we gotta obviously make sure we got a plan going into the future, because it isn't like a normal vehicle that you can just go out and order this thing and have it in, 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 in 12 months anymore, so, um, we gotta make sure we're, uh, financially able to do it, and we gotta make sure we keep our vehicles in a rotation, and, and maybe things will change, but, uh, all the vendors that we deal with right now are just telling us it's gonna get worse and worse, so, uh, hard to plan five years out, so, anyway, I just wanted to make you aware of that, so.
Is that partially due to, uh, decrease in the amount of supporters?
Uh, a lot of it is, at least that's from what I'm hearing, so, um, yeah. And, and then, and then the real disturbing part of this conversation is the, the last truck. So we, we designed it in the end of 16, they built it through 2017, we took delivery in the beginning of 18, again, it was about a 13-month build, um, 400, no, 540,000 for that truck, and today, if I ordered the same exact truck, you're looking at about 950. So, almost doubled in cost, so, it's, it's, it's really starting to hurt the pocketbook for, you know, every municipality out there, and you think there's like huge trucks out there, we're very fortunate, we take very good care of our trucks, and you know, and that's why I push the wash bay in the new buildings, so we can wash and keep the salt off, because that stuff just, you know, eats everything, and we take care of the things. Most municipalities are getting around 25 to 30 years out of a tru- out of a truck, we're getting, we're getting, the last truck was 45 years, you know, and I, we're, we're pushing 40 years on the, our oldest one right now again, so, we'll, we'll get a few more years out of it, but, uh, again, taking care of your trucks, that's very important, so. EMS staffing, again, is, is, uh, fully staffed, we've been interviewing for part-time people, we just hired one last week, we hired another one today, um, again, trying to keep the full-time staff up as much as we can to, to keep, uh, the thought of hiring any more full-time helping to be able to keep that third truck out on the road, because we continue to be busy, so, uh, we're always looking for part-time staff. Um, other than that, uh, still working on the, the union negotiations, I think we're down to one item, uh, the attorney's working with the union on that, and hopefully we can get this ratified here shortly, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the library. Ms. Erma.
The Kellers left before I asked if they were gonna be nice to us. They're supposed to be doing our stairs, so, if anybody has an in with them, let me know. Good evening, everybody. December, we checked out 1,895 eBooks, physical checkouts in December, 3,716, for a total of 5,611 items checked out from your Toma Library. We have been really busy in the children's department, but wait a minute, before I continue, everybody is welcome to come to the library to pick up a literacy calendar. So, we purchased, from the Public Library Association, we purchased an online calendar, which we've been printed out for people. You come and you pick this up, it has an activity for people to do with their children every day, it will help increase their literacy. This is free at the library, we purchased it, come and get a copy for yourself or for a child, let you know. There are some very fun things to do, for example, choose a letter of the day and then point out the letter whenever you see it, things like that. Please come and get this, again, we've already paid for it, so you should be taking advantage of it. We have been busy in the children's library, we have already done, uh, we had a movie, a teen movie on the 4th, we had a bad art contest on the 6th, we had family movie night on the 11th. On the 27th, we have two events coming up. We have a kindness craft coming, VVA asked for Valentines for the veterans, so we are going to have supplies available again on the 27th. Feel free, anybody is welcome to come by and make a Valentine for the veterans, and we will make sure to get them to them. On that same day, we're having house plant swap, so if you bring a cutting or a plant, you label it, bring it by, and then you can trade with other people, for those of you that grow plants, some of us don't, but if you do, you're welcome. In the adult department, on the 18th of January, we will be showing A Haunting in Venice. I saw this movie, it's kind of fun, so if you want to, you're welcome. On February the 15th, we will be showing Barbie, the movie. That will be for teens and for big people. Again, another movie that I saw, that was kind of fun, too. We have new books at the library, we have, uh, J.K. Lassers, Your Income Tax 2024. Unfortunately, not too soon to start thinking about that. Another book we got at the library, Some People Need Killing, that's the name of the book. Now, that's about the drug war in the Philippines. We also got two books about strong women, The Six, and that is a story about America's first women astronauts, and another book about women in, who helped win World War II. As always, call us at the library if you have questions, if you want details about our programs, everyone is welcome. Does anybody have questions for me? Any questions? Anybody? Anybody? Bueller? Bueller? Yeah? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Erma. Uh, moving on to Parks and Rec, Mr. Crowe.
Good evening.
Good evening, Joe.
We'll make her quick tonight. Parks Department, while we're busy with snow removal as well, uh, just reminder to the public, bear with us on our city recreational trail, um, we got the blowers out, finish up today, hopefully we'll be out brooming the rest of the week to get them cleared. I know people use them quite a bit after first few snowfalls with the warm weather, but, uh, you know, this one was, was rough on us, um, with that, so, bear with us with our trails and sidewalks, we'll, we'll continue to work on those throughout the week with that. Um, just still working with the old fire station and ambulance upgrading, um, hopefully in the next month or so, we'll keep providing updates on that and, and getting closer to do some activities for the public at the old fire station. Uh, recreation programs, we're back up and running after the holiday break, and in February, we'll start working on staff recruitment and, and later this winter, and getting programs ready for spring and summer, that's, you know, right around the corner, just think spring, right? The saying is. A recreation park, you can see the activities there, uh, the next few months, our, our bookings are booked every weekend with banquets, rabbit shows, gun shows, uh, we finish up this last weekend, was, uh, um, quite a, activity out there with the tavern league pool tournament and getting all the snow removed, so we thank, uh, Mr. Steele and Mr. Bemis from the sewer plant, were out there Saturday morning, real early, along with myself, getting it cleared up, because they were there, started shooting pool at 8:00 AM in the morning, so that was raining, you know, that continues, so, we had that, and then the hockey activities at evenings out there, so, that kept going out there, and, and thanks again to Public Works for all their help with our snow removal in the bigger parks and throughout the areas that we can't, um, take care of with their, with our equipment, so it's quite the event, but, uh, everyone stepped up and kept rec park open throughout the weekend, so, with that, so, with that being said, working with, uh, the Rotary Club again, the library and Senior Center for Freeze Fest, we'll get that information out this week, that's the last week of January, first weekend of February, just, uh, scaled back a little bit, but we still wanna provide some activities in the community throughout the winter with that, so, a little community event with Freeze Fest coming up, you know, that's what they, when we picked up the buttons at Macca, they said, oh, Freeze Fest, you must have jinxed this, because we got the freezing weather this week, so. Other than that, any questions or concerns?
How's the, uh, semi-core hockey group going doing?
Good, good. I know, um, talking with youth hockey, I know right away the numbers were really good, but they continue to be steady. I know with the other winter sports throughout the community, with the youth and high school activities being indoors and weekends and stuff, you know, not as many as it was in the fall, but continues to be a strong crowd there, so, and they're out and about in the community doing different things and supporting businesses, so it's been, been pos- positive, so, hopefully they'll continue that relationship in the year to come, so.
I heard some of whom were down helping the, uh, the beginners at the cross ice program.
Correct, yeah.
I think there's a game Friday night, you know, I don't need...
Well, they played three games this last weekend during the snowstorm, I know St. Louis, they played St. Louis, Junior Blues from St. Louis come up here, they got here on Thursday before the storm, so, they played all weekend out there, so.
That, um, hockey team that we leased, the hockey, uh, ring, Joe, is out there working out with that lease, good?
Good, yep, with this, uh, approval tonight and getting that, so hopefully they'll continue to come back and get them moved over to the ice center and open up our rooms back over in the rec building, so, but they've been good, they've been working with us when we have the major events and keep it to themselves, and we had like the pool tournament and gun shows that take up large area in that recreation building, so. All right, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the senior disabled services. Good evening, Pamela.
Good evening.
Well, look at that, Freeze Fest, and she comes up wearing a Freeze Fest shirt.
Yes, yes, this week.
Yeah, you guys coordinate.
Yes. Um, speaking of Freeze Fest, Freeze Fest brochures, and, um, on February 2nd, Friday, um, first Friday in February, at 1 o'clock at the Senior Center... in February, at one o'clock at the Senior Center, will be Freeze Fest Bingo and Freeze Fest Yoker, and then following that about four o'clock, three forty-five, four o'clock, will be a potluck supper. So, everybody's invited, it doesn't have to be seniors, anyone in the community is invited, you need a Freeze Fest button, and if you have any questions on that, you can contact me. I encourage people in the community to come on down to the Senior Center for warm activities this winter, and a reminder that we have, looking forward to February and March, we have free tax assist for those who wish, it'll be on Thursdays, ten thirty to three, but you must contact me to make an appointment with the tax assist people, so you need a reservation ahead of time. Are there any questions, you all have my report, are there any other, any questions?
Does your tax assist fill, totally fill up all the time?
No, no.
So there's plenty of opportunity, just, just make an appointment.
Yep.
And you have Freeze Fest buttons?
I will have.
You will have, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you.
Moving on to planning and building inspections, Shane.
Good evening, everyone. So you have in front of you, you should have the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three annual permit total comparison out of eleven categories, listed there, three of them were exactly the same as the previous year, the other eight all increased across the board, and you can see that reflected in the total permits issued, in the permit fees and the product value. Does anyone have any questions on the annual permit total summary?
No, it looked like a good year. Twenty twenty.
Yeah, it was, well, hopefully twenty twenty-four keeps that trend going. Couple other things I can report on, Burger King is finishing up a complete remodel of their store, they're hoping that they can have a drive-through opening by Thursday evening, they're waiting for some dining room seating that got delayed by truck in the storm over the weekend, so their dining room may not be open until next week. Otherwise, that's all I have.
One question, Shane, where do the revenues go, where do the permit fee revenues go in our monetary system?
General fund.
General fund.
Molly can speak to that, but it's general fund.
Just goes in the general fund?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to the Chamber Convention and Visitors Bureau, good evening, Christina.
Good evening, Michael, and everyone, thank you for fitting me on the agenda, Becky, appreciate that. We do have Freeze Fest buttons, so those are in our office currently, if yours, we've got them available. I had on my list to talk about the comprehensive survey, I do sit on our PC and that's part of our, our relationship is to help share that information, so that link, that link is live on our website now, that will also be in our newsletters, in our P of the Week, and on our Facebook. So part of what Van de Waal and Associates does is kind of formulate this plan for getting that information out there, and then our partnership is to help share that with you. We have been working with Van de Waal to kind of complete our end of the wayfinding signage program and have communicated that with the DOT, they have indicated to me that they'll review everything and are hoping to have permits issued to us by the beginning of February, so hopefully that moves forward in a good, at a good clip. We continue to work with River Travel Media on some of our promotions, short reels, videos, those kind of things, those have been very popular, they will be conducting a best of Toma campaign to kind of, I don't know, I think there's like a hundred and some questions where people can go through and vote on their favorites for the community, favorite auto detailing, favorite burger, favorite hair shop, blah, 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 so that'll be coming out in the next probably three or four weeks here. Annual banquet is the last Monday in February, so we're working on our compilation financial reviews to get that completed, that will be at Cranberry Country Lodge this year, tickets are available now, due dates for award nominations was yesterday, so we'll be compiling a small group of volunteers to go through those for us and pick the award winners. Just frame of reference, we don't take those internally, we receive them and then pass that on so someone independent can help choose. Our Leadership Academy will be kicking off in March, that will start off with a day-long session on municipal services and the emergency services, police, wastewater, what, what your taxes are comprised of, what your municipality means, those kind of things, so we'll be sending participants through that program, kicking off with basically knowledge on the city of Toma. Area guides are on schedule to be in hand by the end of February, so we did change our procedure on that a little bit and outsourced through a different company rather than keeping the bulk of the work in-house, price is about the same, but it's a lot less work and a more professional looking product, I think at the end of the day, so we're excited to see what that looks like. And lastly, we did accept a resignation from one of our CBB committee members today, so we'll be working with the mayor's office to get that reappointed probably in April. Any questions for me?
I do. You mentioned Van de Waal and permits, what are they for?
Our wayfinding signage program?
Oh, okay, okay.
So we have a separate contract with Van de Waal since the city already works with them to basically update the wayfinding signage that's in Toma that has not been updated since two thousand and seven, maybe, way before my ten, two thousand and seven.
Okay.
And since we had some ARPA funds available, we decided to dedicate that money towards that project, and they have been, been working with us for the last, I don't know, maybe nine months or so to go through design, location placements, got a little bit delayed because of all of the road construction kind of happening in the area and then our, our busy summer, but we were able to pick that back up in these winter months now and kind of finalize our ends of it, and hopefully now the DOT will approve it so we can move forward and get the signs ordered, and then Kirk's team has agreed to do placement of the signs for us.
Are they gonna go all over, like twenty-one, or are they?
The majority of them are within city limits, there's a couple outliers that are, would fall into county lines, and we have worked with David Anstett, the highway, Monroe County Highway Commissioner, to get the approvals on that end up for those couple signs.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda, entertain a motion to the approval of minutes for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, temporary Class B license application by North American Squirrel Association to sell fermented malt beverages and wine at the annual fundraising banquet on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and a temporary Class B license application by Toma Warren Sports Alliance to sell fermented malt beverages at the TWSA Ice Fishery on February tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Zabinski, excuse me, second by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the Director of Public Works and Utilities report.
Street Department, basically, we're decluttering. We've taken a lot of things that have been used in quite some time, done a lot of painting in the facility, down at the street shop, trying to upgrade our break room as well, and for the most part, we got those items completed before the snow came, and now we'll be hauling snow for a week or two, and it looks like the long-term forecast is gonna flip upside down, come another week, get warmer, rain, so I'm sure everybody in the community will be just happy, happy, happy people. As we've gotten some of those calls, I did join a not-so-elite club this weekend with my first time that I hit a mailbox, so it happens to all of us, a lot of snow is out there, just a key on that.
And you put a rookie in the truck.
Just a key on that, there is a submission form online if the mailbox is hit, we'll investigate why and provide some reimbursement if appropriate, and in this case, it was inappropriate, so we'll leave it at that.
So you were behind the wheel, huh?
I was behind the wheel.
You had to keep your skills honed and?
We are also working with Toro, we went and looked at what we call the bullpen site, it's across from the skate park, we want to partner with them on storage of their semi-trailers at that site. Two of the bigger items when we discussed were, we didn't want to compete with other people that would be making money off of this, and the other is certificate insurance, and they seem to be fine with both of those, they're actually leasing spaces quite a ways away for this, these activities, so we hope to work with them and, and get them a short-term bridge to get through the busy season.
And that's a revenue stream for us also, we are gonna charge something for that.
Yes, yep, that is an intent. Sewer Department, we did have an upset at the plant, we are working with a local customer to change some of their procedures, basically it was a chemical change on their part, and we've just finally attracted down and, and we'll be working with them to go back to their original chemicals and get our plant back in order, it's, it's really just kind of stunting the bugs that do their work out there, so hopefully we'll work through that. From the Water Department, Mark Raisin is retiring, his last day is February fifth, just have shy of thirty years, so if you see him, congratulate him, we have selected an internal candidate to be his replacement, and it's Jeff Martin, Jeff has done most of our inspection work for the last few years, been out there very readily to a lot of residents, and look forward to him taking over and, and working with that position. So that's kind of the snowball effect, well, we put out for internal candidates to replace Jeff, and then see where that all goes. And then the Lake Committee, we have a meeting this Thursday, it'll either be in this room or in the back second floor conference room.
I believe it's in the conference room.
I believe it's labeled.
Public hearing in this.
No. We didn't know if we're gonna have it ready, but you're right, I think that's where we ended up landing, and that's at five o'clock.
So we now have a conference room up here down on the end where the, the?
Yeah.
So on the second floor, you're at the city hall, yep. Come up like you're coming to the council chamber and go to the other end of that hall, and there's, we have a conference facility there.
Any questions?
I do. Couple.
Yeah.
Okay, not, questions, they're not gonna be plugging, but, uh, snow, I know that we had a lot of snow, had a lot of phone calls regarding the plows, um, snow that had rolled over onto the sidewalks that had been shuttled by residents. What do we, we have a plan, or how can I address that?
Well, we try not to do that, sometimes it's not easy, or we're not able to do that just because of the amount of snow.
Yeah.
But really, the speed is, is what controls and dictates everything, you have to get your speed up far enough to get it to roll out into the boulevard area, and sometimes there's so much snow that it just, it'll spill over into the sidewalks, and we have different whiffs of boulevards throughout the city, so there's, the operators are just, you know, almost have your head on a swivel to try to remember all these areas, so unfortunately, we're, would be relying upon those residents to reshuffle their sidewalks.
Okay, I, I knew you were gonna say something like that, but, you know, over the weekend, when they plow that, it gets to be chunks of snow heavy, and it's almost impossible to get it with a snow blower, so, um, how do we kind of address their concerns?
Well, I guess, I guess, if I can, no, I guess, if I can interject, because I'm a homeowner, too.
Yeah.
And I do the same thing, what would their suggestion be?
They want it, they want.
But what would their suggestion be?
For the city to pick it up, of course.
But again, we're plowing snow, I guess the question has to go back to the, you know, it's, it's quite often when people say, well, I don't like my taxes being so hot, great, that's fine, which thing do you want to do away with? So we can say the best way to not put snow on the sidewalk is leave snow on the road, but they've got to clear the snow from the road, but when you have that much snow, you have to go to a certain speed, and at a certain speed, it's gonna make it roll, so in that capacity, it's, it's not anything being done intentional, if it were being done intentionally, then we could look at a corrective action, but it's, it's, it's just the process.
So, with that said, can we make our drivers a little slower as they pass by with that much snow? Hopefully, this is, we won't get this much snow like we did, I'm just trying to make it where they, you know, they're heard, I guess.
Yeah, I, I hear them, most definitely hear the phone calls, and there are some times that we have went back out, you know, we've evaluated what we've done, we own up to mistakes if we have them, just like we hit a mailbox, I got out, went to the door and told, you know, the individual about it, those things happen, but the practicality of us going back and doing sidewalks for individuals is not realistic, so.
And I, I wasn't expecting for you to do that, I'm just bringing my, their concern to the city.
I, I think it would be best if they called our office.
Okay.
And we'll deal with it on a case-by-case basis, we'll listen to them.
Okay.
And it, it just makes it easier if they contact us directly, some people maybe are intimidated to do that, you know, whatever the case, but.
But at least their, their concern or their, I don't wanna say complaint, is addressed right here at the city level, you know?
Yep.
And then my second question is, we have a lot of sidewalks out there that have still not been shuffled, so are we going out there tagging that, or what?
We are actively doing that, you know, I think, given the quantity of snow that we have, similar approaches Chief talked about with alternate side parking, I mean, in this case, we're gonna give them a little leeway, but not a lot, I mean, it, it, we know they're out there, but.
I had called Casey, I'm on, just on the clean street, they didn't, the five or six, or five inches we got prior to this twelve inch, they have not shuffled.
And, and we are not actively looking for them, but our drivers, you know, citizens will tell us about them and then we'll respond to them.
I did place a, 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 okay, see the jacket.
And you can go online and fill that out, and that'll get back to our code enforcement officer and they'll pursue it.
Okay, great.
Did you, did you spend all of your two thousand twenty-three snow removal that you had left over last weekend?
It's gonna be going out the window this week, yeah, with hauling of snow, it's just, it's gonna be endless trucks driving, driving to the snow piles, but we also had a month where it wasn't as bad, so, kind of, kind of all the evenings out for the most part.
I think they've proven an excellent job of getting the streets down to bear, bear country as much as they did.
Yeah, there's still a lot out there that are ice covered, but just need to slow it down, and, but they did an excellent job, especially the timing of when it falls, it just, it's horrible sometimes to get it done, so.
I was really surprised to see them out there with the motor patrol.
Yeah, they, you know, it's a brand-new vehicle, everybody wants to drive it though, so.
It does an excellent job.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're gonna actually bump number six, the City Clerk Monthly Report, up because then we'll have three in a row for Molly.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few updates, you probably already heard, but we do not have a primary election needed for our local elections here in Toma, which means- have a primary election needed for our local elections here in Toma, which means that the next election is going to be the spring election on April 2nd. If you look at my report, you'll see the lineup of candidates, but we only have one, one office right now that has a contest and that's the mayoral. So please come out and vote on April 2nd. Keep in mind that we will be utilizing the Rec Park building for, for the, the election. We decided that that's where the future elections will always be held. So that's where they'll be.
Can I have somebody standing outside or a couple of people outside?
Well, we'll have staff here that are working and they'll say, oh, you know, that's over at Rec Park. And, and so eventually everyone will get used to it and that's where everyone will go. It's just going to take a little time before everyone gets out of the habit of coming to City Hall for those, those elections. And it's just like anything else, change sometimes is takes, takes a little bit. It is busy in our office right now with end of month, end of quarter, end of year, everything, you know, a lot of reports that need to be done. So kind of working through that. Did receive notice from my part-time deputy clerk that she has given her a resignation notice. She accepted a position at the county as the county deputy clerk. So, yeah. So we're happy for her that she got a full-time position there at the county. We're going to miss her a lot. So we're still kind of figuring out, you know, time-wise, what would be good for replacing that. We want to make sure whoever we bring in has the proper training. And we don't want to do it when we're in the middle of election, you know, stuff. We want to make sure that we're giving them the time, whoever it is that takes that position. So, but we're really happy for her and we'll get to see her sometimes and talk to her because she'll work for the county. So it was a good, a good transition for her. I think Tim had already said, we're still, union contract negotiations are continuing still for the ambulance department. Hopefully we'll get those finished up and get it back to business if there's any changes. And just an update, we did receive, I received about 99% at this point of acknowledgements from all of city employees for receiving the new employee handbook. So that's been distributed. Everybody's acknowledged that they've received a new copy. So just to kind of let you know that got done very quickly. The staff management team was, was really great about making sure everybody got, got one. So. And then, yeah, my next step will be creating an employee site on our website so that that digital document will be there along with a ton of other links and things that employees will be able to go to and use when they're not at work or if they, you know, have a computer they work on every day. The street department doesn't have a computer that they look at it all day long. They can get to those things when they need to, to ask, you know, look for questions about benefits if I'm personally not available. So I think that's about it. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, move on to Molly. The November 30th, 2023 revenues and expenditures in comparison to budget.
About number five.
Oh, sorry. Number five Treasury report.
Let's scroll over my report quickly. As we discussed in the public hearing, I'm doing a lot of kind of cleanup of mass transit with this recent transition to the new provider. I had a compliance audit with Wisconsin DOT on December 20th. And there's been a lot of, they, they gave me a compliance plan basically that I have to follow. We have to make some updates. I will be working on getting our Title VI plan, which is an anti-discrimination plan, cleaned up and in front of you hopefully next month. Tax collection, we sent out our December tax settlements last week. Overall, as a percentage of our total levy, we were up about 2% for December 31st collection. So a few more people paid either in full or before that end of year. Just as a reminder, first installment is due January 31st. So a few more weeks. If you haven't made your first installment, get that into our office. Same with pet licenses. We're selling those. Those are not due until March 31st, but they are available at our window for dogs and cats. And I'm working on getting the budget books compiled and one done. So that's a big step. We will have hopefully all of them done by the end of this week or next. So those will be in mailboxes when they are ready. And our annual audit is scheduled for March 18th through the 22nd. Working hard to get ready for that. The November 30th revenues and expenditures with comparison to budget is here for your review. And then I have the December 31st cash and investments report for your follow-up.
Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Zabinski, second by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move, entertained a motion for the approval of minutes from December 18th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Zabinski and second from, no, Jesus, lost my brain.
What was the name?
Yeah, whatever his name is over there. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
How quickly we forgot.
Yes, sometimes. It's been a day. We're writing down number 10, 11. Resolution accepting donation of land.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Yarrington, second by Zabinski. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertained a motion regarding the authorization of payment of monthly bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Zabinski, second by Mr. Lamont Kiefer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertained a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Zabinski, second by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will go to closed session.